We have our agenda review session. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, in order to adopt and amend the redevelopment plan for the French Prospect redevelopment area in the city of New Brunswick. Number two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking Section 102010, Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Adding 35 Chester Circle Apartment 1C. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 3 Revenue and Finance, Chapter 336 Special Improvement District, Section 336-025, regards to amend special improvement district description. Number two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 5 Businesses, Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 580 Rent Control, Section 58020A, in regard to violations complaint. And number three, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016 Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section 101620, Schedule 24 No Parking at Any Time Adding Georges Road. Number four, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 3 Revenue and Finance, Chapter 328 Fee Schedule, Section 328090, to amend fees for land use procedures. We have resolutions. Number one, approve agenda amendment. Two, approve payroll 102619 to 11819. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, authorize application and acceptance of grant with Middlesex County, 2021 New Brunswick Alliance on Substance Abuse Prevention, cash match $13,888.50 to grant $55,522. Number five, approve request for street closing and use of city property requested by Ruppert University Recreation, Ruppert University Police Department, and New Brunswick Recreation, the location is Buglo Park and various streets for a big chill 5K road race for age funds for Christmas gifts for underdriven children, food bags, soup kitchens, and pizza hungry program for New Brunswick. Street closure, College Avenue closed starting at Huntington Street for the beginning of race and two College Avenue between Barlet and Senior Streets, the entire race, Lowing Street closures, College Avenue to Somerset Street to George Street to Huntington Street, the College Avenue to Buglo Park entrance, around the park loop, to Whitehall Street to Richardson Street, to Psychard Street to Stone Street. Saturday, December 7, 2019, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM for the park, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM for the street closure for the police extra duty. Number six, approve request for street closing requested by Holy Family Parish. Location, beginning at Sacred Heart Church, the Towne Street, the French Street, the Harvey Street, Somerset Street, ending at St. Joseph's Church at the corner of Maple and Somerset Street, Our Lady Guadalupe procession, Wednesday, December 11, 2019, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the police extra duty. Number seven, approve request for street closing requested by Paul Rozen Community School for the Arts New Brunswick Board of Education, location Handie Street between Two Bailey and Paul Rozen Boulevard for college and career event, Friday, December 6, 2019, 9:30 AM to 1:00 PM for police extra duty. Eight, resolution to approve amendment prequalification regulations for bidders for City Hall Roof and Masonery Project, specification number 80419P. Nine, approve authorization to advertise for a prequalification of bidders for City Hall Roof and Masonery Project, specification number 80419P. Ten, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by Youth Empowerment Services to cover the cost of operating programs for the youth of New Brunswick, George Street and Church Street, Ryder Lane and Dudley Road, Friday, November 22, Monday, December 2, Wednesday, December 4, and Friday, December 6, all 219. Alternate dates are Tuesday, November 26, Wednesday, November 27, and Tuesday, December 3, 2019, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Eleven, approve amendment resolution R.021934. Additional dates to December, 2019, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure requested by Gilvein Building Company, reason to dismantle the tower crane at 90 New Street for the Standard and New Brunswick project, New Street between Livingston Avenue and George Street, Friday through Sunday, December 6, 2019, December 7, and December 8, 2019. Alternate dates, Friday through Sunday, December 13, and December 14, and December 15, of all 2019, 8:00 PM to 11:59 PM. Three twelve, approve award contract with Traffic Lines Incorporated for 2019 Traffic Lines Striking, specification number 932-19 not to exceed $24,790. Thirteen, authorize acceptance of grant for 2019 in the city of Perth Amboy for fiscal year 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, JAG program. Fourteen, approve request for street closing requested by the School of Cultural Arts, Music, Y Dance, Bachman CP, beginning at 40 Jersey Avenue to French Street to Towne Street, ending at 56 Troop Avenue, Our Lady Guadalupe procession, Monday, December 2, 2019, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM for police extra duty. Fifteen, approve award contract with 72-hour LLC doing business as National Auto Fleet Group Chevrolet of Wattemville for two 2024 Transit Connect vans for the water utility not to exceed $49,994. Sourcewell Co-op formerly the National Joint Powers Alliance NJPA. Sixteen, approve award contract with 72-hour LLC doing business as National Auto Fleet Group Chevrolet of Wattemville for one 2024 Ranger for the water utility not to exceed Sourcewell Co-op formerly the National Joint Powers Alliance NJPA. Seventeen, approve award contract with 72-hour LLC doing business as National Auto Fleet Group Chevrolet of Wattemville for one 2020 Jeep Renegade for the water utility not to exceed $24,954. Sourcewell Co-op formerly the National Joint Powers Alliance NJPA. Eighteen, approve amendment resolution R.011952. Reason change certification of funds account number to 4041805-01 for the water utility with Mount McDonald Group Incorporated doing business as Mount McDonald LLC for 2019 engineering and support services for the water utility not to exceed $162,000 per open. Nineteen, approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion State of New Jersey for drunk driving enforcement fiscal year 2019 amount $10,617.94. Number twenty, approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion United States Department of Justice Office for JAG fiscal years 2018, the amount $56,191. Twenty-one, approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Home Grant N.19 MC340227, the amount $483,322. Twenty-two, authorize purchase by police department under state contract A 89980/M-0483-NASPO Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics Incorporated doing business as wireless communications and electronics for eight Panasonic arbiters and eight Panasonic CF33 tablets with accessories not to exceed $90,478.8. Twenty-three, authorize purchase by police department under state contract A 89980/M-0483-NASPO Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics Incorporated doing business as wireless communications and electronics for installation services not to exceed $45,533.84. Twenty-four, authorize tax collect for the transfer credits on several tax utility accounts. Twenty-five, approve award contract with House Quota Body, Quota Body repairs for the 2019 warning floor for the fire department not to exceed $1,861.48, Middlesex County Cooperative Purchasing Program CK12 Middlesex. Twenty-six, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure requested by DM Becca's Construction Services Incorporated who installed a two-inch water line to 250 Somerset Street, road closure Somerset Street between Lewis Street and Harvey Street, Saturday, November 30, 2019, the alternate date is Saturday, December 7, 2019, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Twenty-seven, approve amendment resolution R.071906, night work on various streets to perform roadway restoration, Wednesday, November 20, 2019, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Public Service Electric and Gas Company, reason public service and PSE and G gas marketing program Phase 2. Twenty-eight, resolution authorizing the establishment of accumulated assets liability trust NJAC 530-15. Twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the establishment of Storm Recovery Reserve NJSA484-62-1. We have items for discussion by the council, including proposed 2020 city council meeting schedule. We have further comment, and at the beginning we'll have an awards ceremony.
Mr. President, I read this thirty and thirty-one. Did you see your address?
Yeah, I got it.
No problem.
Number thirty is authorized payment of required requisition number ten for project costs for Cultural Center Project Theater Company component with Cultural Center Redevelopment Associates Urban Renewal LLC in care of the New Brunswick Development Corporation not to exceed $494,941.18. And thirty-one, resolution authorizing budget transfers 2019 with municipal budget. Okay? Thank you. All right, roll meeting to the order. Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar's absent. Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Here.
Council President Anderson.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice at the time and place in conduct of all public meetings in municipal councils of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on a corporate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the whole district. Please stand ready for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces here and especially abroad, especially those who have died, especially those who have come back injured, hurt. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes, report of correspondence by the city clerk.
Yes. Item one, a copy of the third quarter flow and loading, actual and estimated projected service charge for 2019 from the Middlesex County Utilities Authority. Item two, a letter from PARS Environmental regarding a preliminary assessment site investigation report for 990 Jersey Ave. Item three, an ordinance from the township of Ascataway amending various chapters of the revised general ordinances of the township of Ascataway. Item four, a letter from Wahid Badawi requesting a final inspection for 139 Sedam Street. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have no public hearings. Before we get to the second reading, we have a special presentation that we'd like to do at this point. Just more.
Thank you, President Anderson, for letting me do this. Not a good time for me, but thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Martin, would you please come here? Would give you a hug. Like I said, not a good time for me right now.
You don't feel good?
No, I just had to get my back and neck. But, well, I will say out of all these times that you have been here, believe me, I know this is your husband, but believe me, he will always have a piece of him inside my heart due to where he's a person that believed in helping make it safe for New Brunswick. Like I said, it's a memory that I shall never forget. And like I said, due to where something from my heart, like I said, wow, I know you said your color was green the first time I asked you, but the first one, I will say, I will give you something that I started from the beginning, due to where I like something you to have, that's where it's a picture of this. Like I said, wow, it means a lot to me due to where, wow, this was the first thing that I ever did for you. And like I said, wow, if I ever do become, get a chance to come to them and work something more to take to you, that is hopefully.
Thank you so much. That was beautiful.
Like I said, I did that one a while ago, and I know you said that your favorite color was green.
It is.
So, wow, I will say, wow, this picture means a lot to me due to where it tells me, wow, never give up what you're good at doing. So, like I said, wow, this is the one that I just presently made for you. Like I said, where the thing was green, and out of these two things, wow, like I said, I will always have a memory of you inside my heart, and I would just like you to please accept it. Like I said, you have a wonderful husband who was a person that really cared in making New Brunswick safe. I have to say, I do miss you, be 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 here, how sometimes things isn't the same without you, but like I said, I wish you happy, happy on with your retirement. Like I said, I would give you a hug, but just.
Okay, how about a handshake?
I can still say that I shall never forget.
Okay, well, thank you. This is the second time you've given me something special, and I really appreciate it very much.
Well, to show you.
You're making an old man feel pretty good tonight, and I hope you get a quick and full recovery. I hate to see you in pain.
Well, thank you. I have a long way to go, and tonight this will be my last meeting where for a while, but okay.
Well, be well. Thank you so much.
Like I said, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I was thrilled to hear that you're prequalifying bidders for the roof project. As you know, I regret that I could not deliver that project for you, and it still sticks in my craw. Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, we'll continue on with our ordinances on second reading. Number one, in order to adopt an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the French Prospect redevelopment area in the city of New Brunswick. If anybody from the public has anything, please come up with a microphone, your name and address for the record. You have up to five minutes, one time, up to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick and New Brunswick Today. If you could, please ask the planning directors for the record, this is the redevelopment plan that Robert Wood Johnson Hospital campus is currently in violation of, correct?
I'm sorry?
Is this the same redevelopment plan that, as we discussed last night, Robert Wood Johnson Hospital campus is in violation of?
Mr. Cradaville is referencing that this redevelopment plan has a component that has a walkway that connects from Somerset Street to French Street and vice versa, and as a component of which, but it is open intermittently, which we're investigating, and the elevator is actually currently inaccessible. It's off on both sides, and so ADA compliance is out of whack, to say the least. But the applicant who the amendment was for and the site that the amendment is aimed at redeveloping is a different developer, is a different redeveloper, although it is in the same Robert Wood campus. It is a different private redeveloper. That was the Children's Health Institute, which was the project that was adopted with the crosswalk, which was memorialized by resolution. This would be for a medical office building.
Thank you. And just to be clear, the request for this amendment to the redevelopment plan came from a company called AST Development, correct? They're the ones that want to build on the parking lot?
This is correct, yes.
Okay. And I would just take the opportunity to remind the council that AST Development had a plan for this site 10 years ago, 13 years ago, when they, in cooperation with the city, pushed out the last Hungarian restaurant in the city, demolished it, left the site as a fenced-in gravel lot with a porta potty that was turned on its side for quite some time. Members of the community, including myself, complained about this eyesore, that AST did not deliver what they had promised when they forced out the existing occupants of the block. And eventually, they agreed to let the parking authority pave over the lot and make them some money by running a parking lot there and, you know, sending them the proceeds. So this is a company based in Lavallette. They basically, you know, failed to deliver what they promised when they forced the people out, and now they're coming back to the city government and saying, well, now we want to build something even bigger than the thing we told you we were going to build last time. Could you please change your redevelopment plan to do that? And this morning, they were in the technical advisory committee, a closed meeting that the public was not allowed in, where they are pushing for this big development that's apparently got the involvement of Robert Wood Johnson Hospital. It's not totally separate. It's actually going to be a part of the campus. Presumably, Robert Wood has signed off on it or is involved in. I don't know why they're doing business with this company and not doing their own work. But I would just caution the council, as I've cautioned the planning board, to be wary of these special requests from developers. You should be thinking about first and foremost what the neighborhood needs, what the redevelopment plan currently states, and the way that you tweak it should be with the people's interests in mind, not the interests of one particular out-of-county company that has lied and failed us before. So I would question whether you really want to make it so they can build an even taller building. This would, I guess, the only change in the redevelopment plan, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is just it's an increase in the maximum height, right? 250 feet instead of?
So there's an increase in height. There's an increase in the permissible floor area ratio, which sort of goes hand in hand with the height. There was a reduction in the parking requirement, and there was, per the advice and consent of the planning board and the encouragement of the planning board chair, to encourage the developer to seek parking off-site, because there are a lot of parking decks in the area, and to try to offset their parking requirement in many of the existing parking decks so as to not consume some of the space on the site with more parking, if it's avoided. Yeah.
Thank you. And so, just for the record, is there a representative of AST Development here tonight, in case anybody has questions to them? Speak now, if you're here. Okay, I guess not, and Robert Wood didn't send a representative either, so the company that's currently, the corporation, the hospital that's violating the redevelopment plan as is, and the corporation that broke their promise to build on the site 13 years ago are the ones that want you to do this, I would urge you to table it and ask them to show up and speak for themselves and explain, you know, why what happened happened and why they're currently not in compliance with the redevelopment plan before you adopt changes that they're requesting. That's just a constructive suggestion. I hope you'll hold this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020 Handicap Parking Section 102010, Schedule 39 Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, Adding 35 Chester Circle Apartment C. Anyone from the public who should comment on that one? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances for discussion on first reading. Number one, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 3 Revenue and Finance, Chapter 336 Special Improvement District, Section 336.25, regards to amend the special improvement district description.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 4, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 5 Businesses, Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 580 Rent Control, Section 580220A, in regard to violations complaint.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 4, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016 Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 101620, Schedule 24 No Parking at Any Time Adding Georges Road.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 4, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number four, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 3 Revenue and Finance, Chapter 328 Fee Schedule, Section 328090, regard to amending the fees for land use procedures.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 4, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have resolutions 1 through 31. Any member from the public who'd like to talk about any of the resolutions, please come up to the microphone.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick and New Brunswick Today. As already mentioned briefly, 934, 935, this City Hall Roof Project, what's going on with that?
The City Hall Roof Project, number eight, Resolution 934, is a request to approve our amended prequalification regulations for the bidders. This is going to help us obtain better quality, higher quality masons and roofers to do the type of historical work that needs to be done on our, on our building. The second resolution is asking the council to allow us to distribute these prequalification requirements to the bidders.
Okay, and for how long has the roof been in need of repair, and how many attempts have been made at doing this bid?
Well, this is the second attempt. How long has the roof needed repairs? Probably for several years.
And is there any danger or issues? I remember once upon a time, you know, water leaking into this room.
No, no, there's no danger issue of that type. Otherwise, if there was a danger, we would do this on an emergency basis.
Got you. Thank you. Moving on, page four is, I know Mr. Wallace probably feels left out, I always just ask Mr. Lattenberg a bunch of questions, and I don't have many for him, so I would like to know about this, what is the deal with Mount McDonald account, certification of funds account number being changed, $162,000? I don't quite understand what this is.
Funds were originally certified, drawn out of operating accounts, which we took out of this resolution, put it back into operating, and moved some capital accounts to cover it. Most of the work that they're doing is design work for some big projects and should have been charged to capital funds from the beginning.
So it's a corrective accounting move to the $262,000?
Yes.
And I think, oh, well, there's an add-on here, so on the final page, 956, the requisition number 10 for DevCo being paid almost a half million dollars here. Is this the final payment, or might we be paying even more?
Mr. Goldberg, could you address that?
Sure. At this time, we don't know if this is going to be the final payment.
We don't know? Is that what I heard?
Correct.
Okay, what, why don't we know? I thought this deal was worked out in advance.
We're authorized up to $18 million. This brings us to almost $16.7 million.
Okay, and what factors would determine whether there's more of a requisition? They just send you a bill and invoice and?
As the bills come in, it's determined.
Of course, the project opened in September, so is there a reason to expect there might be more bills for the construction of this building? It's already, I believe the residential portion might have opened October 1st, but why are we still getting bills?
There may be. We don't know at this time if there will be more bills.
Okay, I would want to know that, and I would think the council might want to know that before you, you know, approve this payment of bills, and I'd like to know if it's the final, final payment, and I think it's a little weird that we don't know that. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions?
Move the resolutions, Chair.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have items for discussion by the council. We have a proposal, 2020 city council meeting schedule. Any council members have any problems with any of the dates and times?
No, sir.
Anything like that?
That's in the case I'll agenda that for the next meeting or document.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Anybody else have anything to do with it?
Yes, Monday, the 25th, the city is distributing free turkeys to residents. All you need is like a utility bill or something to prove residency, is that correct? At Red Shaw School, and the time escapes me again, mister.
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
I'd like to thank everybody who came out for the Veterans Day parade. Appreciate that and appreciate all the veterans who showed up and for all their hard work, even those who didn't show up. We're needed, so.
Is everybody happy Thanksgiving, Thursday? It's Thursday. Do you have family?
All right, we'll move on then to public comments on anything. People, come up to the microphone, please. Once again, you may address for the record. And you have up to five minutes, one time up to the microphone.
Daniel Moore, 333 Somerset Street. I would just like to ask permission from everyone tonight. If you just give me maybe about fifteen minutes tonight to speak. Well, ten, not even saying fifteen, but please, just give me a moment to speak. Like I said, wow, this means a lot to me. If my heart were, please, I'm begging you with all my heart. Just give me the time. Oh, well, okay, well, okay. I would like to say, wow, it is hard for me to stand here today after what I've been going through. Wow, having to get my nerves through. One thing I will tell you, wow, mainly for you, Mr. Egan. Wow, I tell you, each day that I suffer from pain, I see your face. Wow, what type of person could you be till the last time I stood up here for you to really laugh at me and then call me paranoid? Well, like I said, I don't have no mental issue just because of what I do. Like I said, I have a very good brain. But like I said, wow, I can see things, I can do things. And like I said, for you to laugh at me, you will regret laughing at me because you will suffer from severe pain one day. And for you to call me paranoid, like I have a mental issue. I have a very damn good brain of what I do and what I can do. What, I can go to school for art, I can go to school for photography. Wow, I can go to school for to be an engineer. Wow, how I solve so many situations throughout the city of New Brunswick to make it safe. What, I give you visions of what's gonna happen at least six times throughout the city, trying to tell the city, wow, please do this before someone gets hurt. And like I said, for you to say that I have a mental disorder. And like I will say to Mr. Jones and Mr. Valenti, wow, you have really joined in him, like, wow, have you turned against me? How, like I said, wow, I've been helping the city of New Brunswick for a reason. Because, wow, I wouldn't dare want nobody to go through what I, what through for being injured. And like I said, wow, due to what throughout times, where like I said, wow, sometimes the two of you really feel you hate to see that, wow, what I asked for gets done due to where, how you two are really coming against, against me of what I do. Like, I don't have patience to wait for this. Wow, I have patience to do a lot of things. It takes finding a needle to do this. I have patience, but wow, it was one person that really believed me when I said. That was Mr. Mitch. And I will thank you for him believing in me, where, wow. When I see something for a reason, yes, the Lord knows that I will speak up to help someone. Like I said, at so many sites, you could not tell me that I didn't warn the city before something really happening. Wow, Livingston, what, Leon War, before someone's getting hurt. What, Handy Street and Livingston Avenue. And now to prove my point today, wow, as long as I've been asking, two years for middle school. Wow, and then like I said, Mr. Valenti, where like I said, you turned against me. Wow, when I ask for something for a reason, it's to save somebody from getting hurt. And I mean, it's for a reason. And I hope the next time you believe me when I do ask for something due to where I see too many close calls for a reason. Yes, that was this weekend, this Friday. Yeah, someone did get hit by a car on Livingston Avenue, not too far from middle school. But on the by, by Westical. So like I said, wow, whether you all think that I am crazy, like Mr. Egan tried to say, or please, it's not like I don't provide proof of what I tell you every time when something's unsafe. And then with you, Mr. Jones, where, wow, like I said, I call you. You may please do get these to your partner, Mr. Valenti, to show. Maybe he will believe in me of what I say. No, please, you give it to him. And I will say, as a partner, for you to call me and tell me that, wow, I shouldn't be talking to Mr. Valenti the way I do, that I'm, I'm wrong, wow, where you were the witness of him disrespecting me. For you to call me and say that I shouldn't do what I do to, to him, disrespecting me. Well, wow, you've become a person every since you moved from this office to that office. Where, wow, where you hate to see somebody do something good or be right. And that was just like, wow, Mr. Valenti said he gave you the paperwork for the middle school. Wow, I spoke to you on Wednesday. Wow, you never did say anything about receiving, giving me the paperwork that Mr. Valenti said he gave to you to give to me. And like I said, due to where how you two are teaming up, like trying to really make me a bad person. Where like I said, I just provide you with evidence every time. I just do what I see. And like I said, the Lord lets me see for a reason so I can protect somebody. You, like I said, you can't say that, wow, I didn't solve so many solutions throughout New Brunswick to ask you to do something and it stopped the problem, starting all the way back from Joyce Cameron Sanford Street.
Just wrap it up, Mr. Moore.
So like I said, please, like I said, wow, Mr. Valenti, I hope you do next time that I do ask for something to be done, it's for a reason. It's to save someone else from getting hurt. So please do take the pictures and you look at the pictures where the person did get hit by a car right up that way.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the public comment?
I would just want to publicly say, I'm very sorry for calling you paranoid, Mr. Goldberg. I just want to say I'm very sorry. I was called to the city attorney and you accused me of doing something that I wasn't doing. I'm very sorry I made that statement about you. I want to publicly apologize to you. It'll never happen again. Very sorry. I hope you feel better. Your work is beautiful. You're doing a good thing. I hope we can get off on a better start in the new year. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who should comment on anything? Yes?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Dave Bluffins. You mostly know me as the former director of the Youth Services System in the city. I'm coming to just share a thought with you that I would like to follow up on. We've been fortunate here in New Brunswick to be notified, I read about it in the press, that the city will be, well, not the city government itself, but Amtrak is going to be doing improvements to the railroad station or train station. And the, there's a proposal for a significant amount of money coming in for the Cancer Institute. One of the things that has also surfaced has been the consideration of the Cancer Institute replacing the Lincoln School Annex over on Somerset Street. I know that's a Board of Education responsibility, not a city government responsibility. But I've been thinking about the implications of these things and wanted to make a suggestion. The combination of the Cancer Institute expansion and the train station improvements, it seems like there could, excuse me, be some synergy there where the platform for the southbound or westbound Amtrak and New Jersey Transit stations could be extended to the Robert Wood Johnson Barnumus Hospital campus as a part of that. I also would like to think that maybe the expansion of the Cancer Institute might not have to be on the campus of the Lincoln School Annex, but instead could possibly be on the area between the existing railroad tracks and the existing Cancer Institute. Obviously, there would be engineering issues that would need to be considered and so on. But it's not out of the ordinary to build large buildings, tall buildings, over public access streets. And so I'd like, before things get too far down the road, to have the city planning department consider some options for the new developments that may be coming. Basically, we need to look forward and make our plans as a city not depend only on Devco or only on Board of Education for something that could have a significant impact on the city. I'd probably ought to, in the spirit of transparency, mention that I live less than a block from the current Lincoln School Annex. So I would actually probably benefit if that became the Cancer Institute because the property value on my home would probably increase. However, some people might think I have an ulterior motive. So I really just want to address that. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask, but the planning director and his staff could possibly examine some of the ideas that I just threw out. I'm going to try to flesh them out and put it in writing and make a presentation to the city council and the public about what options we do have for that development area there. So I just want to take a moment, and I'm very happy to see that we're receiving the, the city as a whole, receiving the funds for both the passenger station and for the Cancer Institute expansion. But I'd like to see us do some planning on our own about how this can best serve the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jean Clayton. I live in Marlton, New Jersey. And I'm here tonight to ask the mayor and the council to consider passing an ordinance for this ban on sales of puppies and kittens in pet stores. I know you don't have a pet store now, but this is a proactive thing we're doing. A hundred and thirty-two towns in New Jersey have already passed it. The pet stores in this, in this state, there's about twenty-two of them. There's rules for them to follow, but none of them follow it. First, we have federal laws, the Animal Welfare Act, which has specific things, how animals have to be treated at the breeder's place. That has, that's been outdated for years. It allows for a dog to be in a cage where he just has six inches, top, bottom side, just enough to turn around, and they live their whole lives on there. The enforcement is the USDA inspectors. They've cut back on those. And they've also started a rule where they're trying to have them self-regulate themselves. The inspectors that go there, there's unlimited amount. They normally don't write something up because then they have to go back and check it again. So there's less and less inspectors from the federal level, levels. The state has a law that was passed in 2015. It's the Pet Purchase Protection Act. And it sets up rules for pet stores on what they have to give customers, what they have to say to them, the kind of dogs they can buy, where they can source them. And not one pet store in the state follows that rule. The enforcement is from Consumer Affairs, but they haven't done anything about enforcing since 2015, not even inspecting these stores again. We have people that go into the stores and see all kinds of violations. We send it to Consumer Affairs. I've sent over a hundred and twenty complaints to them, and nothing's being done. There's, there's no enforcement, and they just give us the runaround, pretty much. So let me just take a moment here. So we're asking you to take, to help us do this. I understand it's a law and you want as few laws as possible, but the pet stores are not following the law. They bring pets in that are sourced from breeders that have violations that you wouldn't believe. And we have the USDA papers to prove that. They don't have to give anything to the state veterinarian about their pets, which all should be vaccinated before they come into the state. The state vet doesn't keep papers, which is the only state I know of that doesn't do that. And he just is following the law he has, is what he tells me. So for all of these reasons, we'd like to have a little compassion for the dogs and cats that come from these puppy mills. They are all breeders. They breed en masse, and they sell to pet stores. Every pet store will tell you they don't buy them from them. So my question is, where did the two million dogs that these breeders breed come from? There, some of them have as many as eight hundred dogs in their care, and the conditions are horrible. I wanted to send you something that explained this a little bit more with some attachments and a couple of videos and an audio, but I didn't know how to get that to you. So maybe the clerk could help me with that. Because it's video, so I don't know how to do that. So I'd like you to consider that and possibly have a first read of your next meeting. And we'll answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Larry Cohen. I live in Fannwood, New Jersey. I'm here as a volunteer for the Humane Society of the United States. I work with Ms. Clayton on these ordinances throughout the state. She mentioned, New Jersey leads the nation in such ordinances. There's over a hundred and thirty in this state, but by no means is New Jersey an outlier. Two states have made this state law, California and Maryland. Does not happen in neither of those states now. And there are over three hundred towns and cities across the country that have done this, including big cities like Boston, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Chicago, et cetera, et cetera. The reason we're doing this is because, as Ms. Clayton stated, the industry is corrupt and broken. She's, I'm a former teacher, and she's the best researcher that I've ever met. And she can provide you unbelievable documentation that proves that pet stores source their animals from cruel puppy mills. Part of that is a result of state law. In New Jersey, a pet store must source from a USDA licensed breeder, which on the surface sounds good, but is not. As Ms. Clayton mentioned, they're bound by the Animal Welfare Act, which is outdated, archaic, and cruel. And it also leads these pet stores to these mass breeders out in the Midwest, where this type of activity is tolerated. You look at any of their breeder lists from these stores, and you'll see that they're getting their animals from Indiana, Illinois, Texas, Iowa, et cetera, et cetera. So what, what is happening, what this movement is basically, is an effort to do two things. Number one, set up a firewall. It's a simple matter of supply and demand. Enough towns and cities and states are thinking, hey, if we can say, we don't want this here, perhaps we can put a dent in the suppliers if they have nowhere to ship these dogs. And number two, we think it's a very, very important statement on behalf of your citizens in terms of morals and values. I'm sure that most people in this room would raise their hands if I said, you know, do you have a pet at home that you cherish as a, as a family member? We have a unique relationship as human beings with these animals. We are their stewards by choice. And part of this effort is to recognize that we have a responsibility in our stewardship. And to recognize that these animals do not deserve this. They cannot speak for themselves, they cannot act for themselves. It's a pretty benign ordinance. It's not a heavy lift. I think you would find that the vast majority, the overwhelming majority of your residents would applaud you for doing this. What I have for each of you is two things. One, an investigative report by the Humane Society that really spells this all out. It shows you exactly where, what these stores are doing and how they're going about it. And the second is a sample ordinance crafted by lawyers at the Humane Society that you can look at and hopefully use as you produce your own. I've also attached my business card so that you can get in touch with me if you need to. But I, I have two of them, and on the other side, there's a website that I've created. It's hard to take in all of this. It's hard for us to present it all in five minutes. But at your leisure, you can go to this website and see a lot of the information and hopefully digest it and come to understanding a little better. May I give this to the clerk? Okay, there's five here, and I know that one of the members is absent, but if you could stay one for that now. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. I'm a far less noble cause to bring to your attention. My name is Paul McLean. I live at 225 Hale Street in New Brunswick. I've been a resident of New Brunswick for just over a year, but I've lived in Middlesex County for twenty years. And you may be familiar, it may have been reported, that there's a storm sewer on Hale Street in front of my house that routinely floods with any kind of large-scale rainstorm. It also, the storm sewer runs underneath the Baptist Church side of my home, under my property, is inadequate. I'm sure that neighbors on Baldwin Street behind me have a problem with this as well, and I think the engineering department knows about it. And I just want to bring it to people's attention publicly here, that I think this is an infrastructural thing that needs some attention in the city. Soon, periodically, people will come and flush the sewer to try to make it work better, but it's only a very temporary fix. I own a beautiful old home, old home, 100-year-old plus home, and everybody just don't, I think the city ought to take better care of its infrastructure so that homes like this can be protected. So thank you very much for your attention.
Bless you, you're aware of it.
Yes, we've been at the church several times, and I believe this gentleman had recently contacted us, but the line that runs between Comstock and Hale is a little bit different from his line. There are some oddities in the storm sewer system there, that there's no storm main on Livingston Avenue, on a couple of blocks, it comes through mid-block. So we've been trying to flush this on a monthly basis, just as a maintenance issue. The church claims is when the, the Red Shaw School was completed, that they connected some of the roof leaders through that, and that's adding load. So we're, we're gonna, we're aware of it, our, we have our public works guys there keeping a monitor on it, and we're gonna try to evaluate just to address other storm issues in the city as well.
I really do appreciate it. I think, I just feel like it needs to be handled now proactively, not reactively, when us, when the rain starts coming, and I really would, I appreciate your attention to it.
Please also keep in mind, last year was by far a record rainfall year. We had 35% more rain as, than on an average basis, so that's, that's probably in part due to part of that issue.
Well, that doesn't help me, doesn't reassure me too much for the future when I try to face damage issues.
To go back to some of the signs, originally 50 years ago, they probably didn't have these rainfall values in mind, so that, that could be a contributing factor, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening, once again, Charles Prattville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I want to start by thanking Danielle Moore for her continued advocacy for the people of New Brunswick. She really has made a difference in terms of saving lives and stopping people from getting hurt by pointing out these dangerous situations, and, you know, in your absence, Danielle, I'm gonna do my best to, to, to follow in your footsteps and raise issues like that. And, you know, in, in the spirit of saying a nice thing about Tom Loughlin, I do want to say that folks can now wait at a bus shelter on Albany Street because of the city's work. I know Mr. Loughlin started it, and the folks who are here now finished it, and now there is a bus stop there, a bus shelter there. It was a suggestion that came from me, and I want to thank everybody for following through and delivering on that. Regarding your meeting schedule for 2020, I'm not sure if you're aware, but while, while we were all here tonight, the Housing Authority met, and probably is over with their meeting by now. It's obviously not a good thing to have the meetings at the same exact time. It usually only happens in November and December, so I would just respectfully ask that before you agendaize a 2020 meeting schedule, that somebody checks with the Housing Authority what, what they are gonna do with their meeting schedule, and just make sure that there's no conflicts. Might be wise to do the same with the Parking Authority and the Board of Education. Do you think you could do that?
We'll look at it.
Thank you. So firefighting, a noble profession. We're supposed to have a firehouse museum, maybe just a couple hundred feet from my house. Some of you, you know, at least one of you here, you know, ran for election in 2010 saying, we're gonna fix Remson Avenue. Part of it is, we're gonna, we're gonna put that firehouse museum there on the second floor of 81 Remson Avenue, but it hasn't happened yet. I know there was supposed to be some progress this year, can I get an update?
Do we have any update on this thing?
The Firehouse Museum is put on hold. The location will currently be used for a Code Blue.
Shelter.
I guess a shelter.
Warming center.
A warming center.
Warming center.
So, no, no immediate plans for, for the museum to actually happen?
Not at this time.
Okay. So Keith Jones is in the mayor's office, his name came up tonight. What, what is his title, his official title?
Chief of Staff.
Okay. And I, I do want to raise a concern, because I know some new firefighters were sworn in on Friday, and, and it's a great thing, and, and I, you know, I, during the campaign last year, Mr. Jones unfortunately spread some misinformation about me and my positions, and said that I support ending the career fire department that New Brunswick has had for my entire life, and making it an all-volunteer fire department. And, you know, he, he made these statements online, I questioned those statements and asked him to retract them, and he didn't. So through the chair for Mr. Jones, can he just explain what basis he had to make those statements, and, and, and whether or not he still believes that I want there to be an all-volunteer fire department in New Brunswick?
No, you can discuss that with Mr. Jones after the call.
Okay, so he doesn't, you're not gonna hold him accountable for his lies?
No, I don't even know if they are, so yeah, why you got to talk it out first.
Okay, well, I don't think it's a good move for the mayor's chief of staff to be spreading misinformation around the city, and of course, he wasn't the only one who, who spread misinformation and lies about me and my positions during that campaign. So the red parking meters that are all over town now, I understand the mission there, but not all of them have signs that point out what the mission is, so is that gonna be addressed? I'm, I'm afraid some people are gonna think they're legitimate parking meters, be parking in spots that aren't supposed to be.
Some of them don't have signs.
This is correct. So there was a, you want me to answer?
Just wait, we are working on it.
Yeah, there's signs to be here tomorrow.
Okay. And where's the money gonna go? Who decides?
Operated by the United Way, I believe, and we have all these charities that are listed.
So who's gonna decide?
There's a homeless coalition that was put together.
The coalition will decide.
The coalition will collectively decide what to do with the funds, okay. This is the first time I'm seeing you since the election. I know the referendum passed overwhelmingly, so will the council be following through in passing an open space tax?
There will be an ordinance that will have to be adopted. I'm in the process of looking at it now and formulating the proper document in place before council for introduction. I'm not gonna promise that's gonna be at the next meeting, but I'm trying to move on as quick as I could.
Okay, so that's a yes. And I gotta, yeah, do you think it's a good idea to close down a functioning elementary school, even if it means the kids will be sent to a warehouse in the industrial part of the city? Because that's what the Board of Ed is talking about doing, as a temporary stopgap if the Lincoln Annex School is sold and demolished. Do you think that's a good idea?
I'm sure the Board of Education knows that's what's going on, and I think the best part is the education of the children, so whether they get that here, there, or anywhere, as long as they're getting good education, that's all that really matters.
Boy, I, I, I really disagree. I don't think it's a good place to be sending elementary school kids to go to a warehouse across from a chemical factory and the unemployment office, and I think what happened with Red Shaw should be a lesson that we never forget. Those kids were promised a new school, and they didn't get it, and what ended up happening was those kids who went to school K through 5, their entire career was in that warehouse school because of broken promises, which, you know, alluded to some other broken promises here tonight, but we can't let those kids down. It was a great thing that Board of Ed did by taking the St. Peter's School and turning it into a public school that opened just three years ago. They just put solar panels on it this summer to close it. Would be insane. It would be a total abdication of the board's responsibility, and they are entertaining the idea. They had their business administrator go to Devco.
I did go with the Board of Education, but.
You can count on me for that. And I was there last night complaining, but I'm raising it to you, because you're also my elected officials, and, and those kids are, are your constituents, and, and it would be so wrong to close that school, and so I invite you all to join us. We are having a, a rally on Tuesday the 26th, 3:00 PM in front of the Lincoln Annex School. Don't sell the school, save the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing that?
Vote for Jerem, Mr. Jerem.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Cora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Happy to be here.